Call the Broken Arrow City Council meeting to order. We have invocation by Pastor Chauncey. Hi, sir.
Good evening. And that's all by our heads. Father in the name of Jesus, we just want to thank and praise you for this great city of Broken Arrow. Thank you, God, for all that you are doing here. We lift up the city and the city council and all of the other leaders of the city of Broken Arrow. And we thank you, God, for the continued prosperity and for economic increase for our city. We thank you for your constant protection. And Lord, we ask that there would be unity in tonight's meeting. We thank you for the wisdom that's needed to make righteous decisions that will cause Broken Arrow to continue to advance. And we thank you, God, for insight. We thank you for wisdom.
And strategies that will be for implementation. We thank you, Father, for your sovereign will being done at all times here in Broken Arrow. And we thank and praise you for hearing and for answering our prayers tonight. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, roll call.
Pickle.
Here.
Pickle.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here. Please stand and join Vice Mayor Parks for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as a stance.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Roll call. Item seven is public hearings, presentations, and recognitions and awards. Seven A, presentation of the results of the South Broken Arrow Library micro survey. Erin McCullough.
Caught me off guard. I didn't expect to be up here so soon. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councillors, Harold McCulloch, Communications Director for the City of Broken Arrow, Mr. Spurgeon, good evening. Happy to present the results of the South Broken Arrow Library Project Plan Results Survey, if you will. This was a survey that went from July 28th through August 18th, so yesterday at 11:59. And it was another strong showing as far as our community coming out and responding to the survey. I'll leave you on a little cliffhanger here. We'll get to the number just yet. Let you wait for it here. Just a little background. What we learned on June 18th from Tulsa City County Library was that they have a plan to build out their library. It's going to be twice as large as the current facility there at New Orleans and Aspen. They'll have large community meeting rooms, classrooms, tech hub, children's amphitheater, outdoor reading area, drive-up service window. And we learned that it does have an estimated cost of around $12 million. We also learned that they have raised about $6.65 million toward that project. And there is a funding deficit right now of $5.3 million. There's been discussions about a partnership between the city and TCCL to have a seventh proposition on the 2026 general obligation bond and asking voters if they would support the city contributing to help fund some of that deficit. So we went to the public. We asked them two questions. First question was how much they would be willing for the city to contribute to the plan. We had six different options. Five of those options were in million-dollar increments, one million all the way up to $5 million. And then there was also an option for no contribution. Then we asked a second question. This was open-ended. If you chose no contribution, why is that your choice? Now, the results. As you can see here, 90% of the people who responded responded in the affirmative that they would like to see some kind of contribution from the city. 58% responded $5 million. And there was a grand total of 4,212 responses, which this is actually, this represents the highest response rate we've had for any of our surveys up until now. As you can see, no contribution was at 10%, 3 to 4 million was at 10%. And then it just kind of carries on from there. But again, there's about 90% of the respondents who said that they do want to see some kind of contribution. As for the second question, as you know, when you have an open-ended question, when folks can write in, they will actually respond to things other than just what you ask them. And so I went through, I haven't had a chance to go through all of the responses. Not all 4,212 responders actually wrote something in that field, but a couple thousand did. And I haven't had a chance to go through all of them. But I have gone through, and these are some of the themes that we're seeing. As far as supports a city contribution, a lot of them cited a recent study that showed the state of education and our ranking here in Oklahoma. And so therefore, there's a need for this new library building. Libraries bring more opportunity for learning, creativity, and community. The current facility is undersized and needs to be upgraded. They cited the opportunity for children to engage with books as opposed to their phones and iPads. And they see some benefit to the community. As far as the opposition, a lot, the five themes that I'm seeing throughout is that the internet has limited the need for brick-and-mortar buildings. The library system receives allocation from Advalorm collections. Contribution for the library could be used for other purposes, needs there in the city. Some questioned some of the features, some of the amenities, and they pointed out that Broken Arrow has a second library. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So obviously, they have time to continue to raise funds. So the amount by the time we go to bond could be considerably less than what they're requesting at this point, so.
Yes, ma'am. It's my understanding that they are still actively pursuing private donations.
I think it shows a strong community and a strong support for our library system. That's exciting.
I was there this Saturday at the South Library, reading to a group of families and such. And hadn't been in the South Library in a long time, so it is very small.
It is. I know you probably don't know this answer, but it would be interesting to see what kind of features they questioned, you know, like what they didn't like.
Some questioned the amphitheater. Some questioned the drive-up window, excuse me. Those were the two that really kind of stood out the most as far as seeing. I'll be able to go back through and get you a little bit better detail on that.
That is definitely interesting. I mean, for myself, I can just say that when we did our national night out and went around, I was talking about the South Broken Arrow Library and things like that. And there were overwhelmingly a lot of people that just loved the idea of a new library because it is something that, we did go through the phase where you used a lot of electronic devices for those things, but you've seen that start to change where it's back to a good paperback book or paper, those types of things. And just what it adds to the quality of life in Broken Arrow, I really am excited to see those numbers and what can come from it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, seven A is the update on the 2026 general obligation bond package. Mr. Spurgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Counsel, good evening. So we have the three public hearings coming up is the one thing I was going to report this evening. And obviously, we're working on the details related to giving a short presentation and then getting to the open portion of the forum where folks can actually go to the different stations or propositions. And there will be a proposition for additional discussions for folks to comment about the potential partnership between the city and the library, which is very exciting to see the results of those surveys. The fact that it was the highest survey that we done, even beat the overall survey that we did last year was, it shows the engagement that Broken Arrow residents have with regard to wanting to see what's best for our community. And so the three public forums are the 28th of August, the 3rd of September, and the 25th. And they all start at 6:30. And there are going to be different locations throughout the community. And we're very excited to actually have these public forums because even though we still have a ways to go, we're nearing the end of another phase, which is the public comment phase. And then we'll start the fall is looking at narrowing down what projects the council would like to see in the package within the dollars that we're going to have available to make sure that the, at least propositions one through seven essentially would be no change in the tax rate. So this is very exciting, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. There's more information coming out. Council members have done some videos with regard to the public forums, and I think those have been well received. And I'm excited to have the three, get the three meetings underway.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, item eight is citizens' opportunity to address the council on general topics related to city business or services. I'll remind everyone that no action may be taken on matters under this item since they are not on the agenda. So we have three on here. And the first one is, okay, so it looks like, so Ryan? I, you're, are you speaking on behalf of all three?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So Ryan Fullda?
Yes.
Okay. And speaking on behalf of minors, Parker Sellers, Matthew Sellers, and Jennifer Sellers.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Yes, absolutely.
So yeah, so I'm Ryan Fullda. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm an attorney, and I represent Matt and Jennifer Sellers. They're here tonight along with their daughter, Parker, and then their son, Graham. And so the Sellers are residents of Broken Arrow. They actually live in the Central Parks Estate area. And I'm here tonight because about a year ago, they had a sewer backup at their property. The sewage backed up into their home, caused significant damage, was about $45,000 in damage for the cost to repair the damage from the sewage. That displaced them from their home for about six months. During that time, they lived with Matt's family. They were very appreciative of that, but it caused a lot of disruption to their life. Now, as some of you may know, oftentimes, insurance, homeowner's insurance provides little to no coverage for these types of backups. It's very often an exclusion. They had a rider that covered about $12,500 of the damage, but the rest of that $45,000, they bore that out of pocket. That's an out-of-pocket cost that they incurred. And so the reason I wanted to come tonight, the Sellers wanted to come tonight, was because they did file tort claims with the city. The city has not responded to those yet. By operation of law, here in the next month, if the city does not resolve those claims, then the next step for the Sellers will be to file suit. I have represented a number of claimants before in backup cases, and I find that now is the best time to resolve these claims because once suit is filed, typically, almost always attorney fee, attorney's fees increase, and then also expenses increase significantly. And so the Sellers do want to share with you just a little bit about how this has affected them, and then I'll close with some additional remarks.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
I'm Matt Sellers, resident of Broken Arrow. Whenever the backup happened, the timing couldn't have been worse. My wife was pregnant at the time. It happened six months ago. We have a four-month-old son, Graham. And during that time, Jennifer, whenever I was working on the home, Jennifer was staying with Parker and pregnant, she had spikes of blood pressure. And that led to her being in the hospital twice to get that monitored. And then ultimately, because they were afraid she was preclamatic, led to Graham having to be induced three weeks early. And luckily, by the time of induction, I had finished effectively enough of the house that we could move in two days before Graham was born. So thankfully, we didn't have to take a baby back to my parents' house. But ultimately, it all worked out, but it was a big, I guess, headache and huge stressor for me and the family. Thank you for your time. Sir, that was our share. Thank you.
And then Jennifer.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Sellers. After the backup occurred, we stayed with Matt's parents, and we're so grateful and fortunate to have had their support. Having family in town to houseless made all the difference, both financially and emotionally. Parker loved spending time with her grandparents, as you can see. I had extra help while Matt was away, and Matt had his dad's help restoring the house. Still, it wasn't without challenges. Matt did not have time to study for his CPA exams and ultimately had to stop, delaying an opportunity for career advancement. Parker struggled. Her behavior became more challenging. She often talked about her house being broken, and she missed her toys and her daddy, who was usually only home long enough to grab a quick meal before heading back to work on the house. Moving back in just two days before our son was born also made the newborn stage even harder as we were still unpacking and resettling. Through it all, we're grateful for the strength and resilience our family showed, the support of our loved ones, and the chance to finally reclaim our home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I've never served on a city council before. I have been to a number of HOA meetings, homeowners association meetings, so I think I can empathize that each of you have a very thankless job. And so I want to be very mindful that nothing we say here today, we don't mean it as accusative or adversarial, but there, so there is a reality that this has had a financial and emotional impact, a life impact on the Sellers. If you, Matt, oh, this works, okay. I did prepare some slides. I'm going to make this quick. This is a picture of their home. This is a very crude demonstrative that just shows kind of where the sewage went. Obviously, the area that shaded brown identifies the areas that it was exposed to. I don't want to belabor the liability issue. Clearly, an illegal action such as this, liability would have to be demonstrated. The Sellers were told at the time by a member of the city crew that a root ball had been identified in the city's main line. And so without getting into liability too much, I think that, from our perspective, that that is established. But I don't expect the city to necessarily agree on that. I'm just laying out our opinion. So these are photographs. What you see is like essentially sewage, sludge, in areas of the home. It was very extensive. And then ultimately, this shows some of the areas that were torn away. So ultimately, cases like this, if they're litigated, they have to be valued. And I'm showing these instances of similar cases that reached verdict or settlement just to show what similar cases are valued at if they are litigated, just like if you were looking for a home, you would look for comps for a home. Now, the whole reason we are here today is because the Sellers are not dead set at all on a number like this. They are coming here because they believe that right now provides the best opportunity for resolution of this early on. And so in closing, here's the ask. We realize that coming here, there is a risk that the Sellers will be perceived as either weak, they don't want to file a lawsuit, or that they're looking to resolve a claim for a number that makes, does not make them whole. They don't want to resolve the case for a number that doesn't make them whole, but they also believe that this is the right time to resolve it. And so what we would ask is if the city has interest in doing that, then it advise us through council and that we could explore possible early resolution. So that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't know. We can't, we can't ask questions.
Thank you to each of you. Appreciate it.
I don't have a question, but I would like to say I did get to meet the Sellers and their parents over and the two babies. And Ms. Parker has a three-year-old birthday, so happy birthday to Ms. Parker.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Parker.
She'll be like, remember that one time when I was three and I spent my birthday at a Broken Arrow City Council meeting?
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Second. All right, item nine is general council business. Nine A, consideration discussion and possible acceptance of the Drainage Advisory Committee's recommendation to approve expenditures of 2018 general obligation bond funds to replace a retaining wall along Liberty Trail. I thought we weren't doing retaining walls anymore in this city.
We try not to mention that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Here to talk about walls, retaining walls.
Okay.
Isn't that exciting? So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Spurgeon. My name is Charlie Bright and the Director of Engineering and Construction. Kind of talk about a unique project today. It's a Drainage Advisory Committee recommendation for the expenditure of funds from Proposition Six. One of the reasons it's unique is because the City of Broken Arrow is the applicant, which isn't always the case. You know, that's obviously, we have the recommending body because we can do the work on private property. But that is the good reason for it is while we are the applicant, the trail itself sits on private property. It sits on OTA property. We do not own it. So as some of y'all know, I've got, I get calls about it all the time. I know our Parks Director, Matt Hendrick, gets calls about it all the time. I'm sure some of y'all have heard about it. Our trail is shut down between Elm and New Orleans, or Elm and Aspen right now along the trail. And the reason being is, the reason being is ultimately the failure of our retaining wall. So the picture doesn't necessarily do it justice, but the wall's about, I think, between 800 and 1,000 feet long. It's a long wall. It's not small. It's failing in several spots and looks like it's at risk of failing in multiple other locations. It appears to us it's lost all of its structural strength. It was supposed to be built with GeoGrid back here. We see no signs of the GeoGrid existing anymore. We're not sure if it was just never put in place because of the OTA or if somehow it's failed and moved, but it's not there anymore, which means the wall has no strength. So from a liability perspective, we are concerned that it's already failed, but it'll continue to fail. And so the project that is proposed is to completely rebuild the wall. From the frustrations that we've gotten from citizens, they're like, you know, we haven't seen anybody out there working on it. We're not putting it back up. This isn't as simple as just going and pushing the thing back up against the wall. That entire wall needs to be replaced. We need a new wall. So we are working on it. We're actually doing an in-house design. My team's drawing it and designing it. And I think Mr. Schwab is going to stamp it as the engineer of record, ready to get it built. We have taken it to the DAC for recommendation for construction funding. Reason being is it's on private property and the wall is failing because of the drainage coming from the turnpike. And this is what we felt like was the best available funds that we could use to get this problem solved. Ultimately, the water's running off the turnpike coming from the highway. It does not have a adequate way to get through the wall today. And then with the lack of GeoGrid in the wall, it's causing failure onto the trail. So our proposal is that we use Prop Six funds to pay for construction while we do the in-house design. If approved, our goal is to get the plans ready for bid this winter, kind of have construction winter, early spring, and hopefully we can have the trail open next spring. So I am happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
When this came before the committee looked at it, it was mentioned, so I'll not mention about not another wall, the way the mayor did. So I think they've got that message to do a good job on it. I think one of the things that we were talking about too is, this is actually about the point of ingress going west on the turnpike. Is that correct?
This is on the on-ramp. Yes, this is the on-ramp from Elm Place getting on to the turnpike heading westbound.
So there's a little bit of issue with traffic situation. You know what I mean with it also. But the Drainage Advisory Committee certainly was very much in favor of it, certainly fell underneath our umbrella.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, we do anticipate, we've already had the initial talks with the OTA. We think the OTA is going to work with us. But part of the wall design that we're working on, Mr. Schwab, my team, is to basically design a little cantilever wall that goes the other way so we have as minimal impact as possible on the OTA because we don't think the OTA is going to be very welcoming to us doing construction significantly on their side, which would cause a lane to potentially be shut down or whatever else. So we are trying to have as minimal of an impact as possible on the OTA side of fence. It's all OTA property, but we're trying to have as little impact as we can on that side of the fence.
So I just want to clarify, because when you started talking about, you said our wall is not our wall or is our wall from the beginning?
I may let Mr. Schwab answer the technicals of it, but my understanding it is our trail and our wall, but it's technically sitting on OTA property.
Okay.
That's correct.
So.
Okay. And I will say, even though there are signs and there's barricades that say trail closed, people are using the trail every day.
Understand.
And, yeah, and it's my understanding that it's, they're taking it at their own risk by going around those barricades and those barriers.
Absolutely. And we've had that discussion. A lot of people want us to take down the barricades. We've heard the comment. We can see it with our own two eyes. We can go around it. But, you know, it is a liability issue, as you said. And we are concerned that the wall will continue to fail, and we may not be aware of it when it does continue to fail. So we are asking for $500,000 in construction funding. That's our estimate currently for building a new wall. It is a little high. I think we estimated the actual construction cost probably closer to $300,000. The issue being is that doing construction in this area is going to be really difficult. There is no way to get concrete trucks to the area. There is no way to get vehicles and everything. So it is going to be a difficult area to work with, so we assume the costs are going to be higher just because of the workability in this area.
And also with the, not knowing exactly how much it costs, if they're, the city's going to do it in-house, and any funds that are left over goes back into that Proposition Six to be used, you know, so it just gives them a little bit of leeway.
We can probably provide some wheelbarrows to move that concrete.
You got to move it before it hardens. Got to be fast.
So you said originally, they, it doesn't sound like it was built properly originally.
We don't know. So it was designed with GeoGrid. We do not know. We don't know what happened there at the time. We suspect that the OTA, we might have been designed that way, and the OTA may have said, because if GeoGrid was placed, it should have been placed very close to the turnpike. And we suspect the OTA might have said, you cannot get in here and dig that close to the turnpike. And so at some point, the city, the contractor, somebody said, we're just not going to put the GeoGrid in. We don't know what happened. All I know is that when you look at it today, the GeoGrid's not there.
So can that be another talking, City Manager Stevens and I were talking earlier about following protocols that we will make sure that we follow up in every step of the process of building the retaining wall, that everything that's needed in it will be actually placed in.
Absolutely. I mean, a job, any job like this today, I imagine we did back then, but today we have a construction administrator that sees the job every day. We ensure that that's done on all construction projects. I don't know what happened back then. Some sort of agreement could have been made.
Yeah, because it was like 2003 or something like that.
Yes. So the city may have agreed to it. I do not know. We just don't know. It's not there. But yes, we have people on job site. It will be built the way that it's designed to be built.
And the OTA is going to let us build it correctly.
Yeah, we've initially talked with them. We think they're, they're probably going to try to get us to do as little work as possible as close to the turnpike, but we'll work with them and we'll get it worked out.
And they don't want to contribute anything to it?
No.
Just going to, you know, just throwing it out there.
Okay. Yeah. Any further questions or discussion?
Well, I guess my concern is if the OTA doesn't want us to build it close enough to their road or whatever, and that's the proper way to do it.
So I mentioned the cantilever, the wall. So the old design, what you see here, is a VersaLock wall with GeoGrid that goes back into the soil, and that grabs its strength from the soil that will keep it from going. So what Mr. Schwab, my team and I have discussed is we're going to build a cantilever wall this way, so actually, nothing will go back towards OTA. The wall and the trail will be connected, and so the trail will be holding the wall up. And so this way, all the work we're going to do is going towards the trail and not the OTA. So we're designing a new wall type that will have a minimal impact on the OTA to avoid them.
And how do we plan on keeping the bicyclists away from this during construction?
Once we hire, I mean, I know they're doing it now. Once we hire a contractor, it'll be the contractor's job to secure the site. He'll probably put full fencing up and everything else, so it'll probably get more locked down once a contractor takes control of the site.
All right. We'll probably have to make sure we put out a lot of education on it being closed, though.
We've already been talking to a lot of them. I know we've been posting it, but there's a lot of unhappy people, which I understand. I mean, it's nice weather and it's a period, but this wall's not a small wall and it's not a quick fix.
Well, you said, what you mentioned, was it 2003?
Yeah.
So it's been there for 20, 21 years.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I'm not using that, we can't lose walls over 20 or 21 years, but.
For a VersaLock, for a VersaLock-style wall, I mean, that is a decent lifespan. And like Mr. Schwab and myself have both said, I mean, we're pretty happy and fortunate. We got 21 years out of it considering. We got 21 years out of it, considering we don't see the GeoGrid.
That was kind of my point.
Yep.
You know what I mean? It did get, it's not like it fell apart within three or four years. I'd make a motion that we approve the request of the Drainage Advisory Committee on this, using these bonds to replace retaining wall along Liberty Trail.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
I really didn't mean to make a motion.
All right, there are no preview ordinances. Item 11 is ordinances. 11A, consideration, discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3885. Kelly talks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Spurgeon. The ordinance before you this evening is the employment ordinance. This ordinance defines what qualifies a candidate for employment. The current language that we have in the ordinance automatically disqualifies somebody if they have a felony or any misdemeanor that involves moral perpetude. The recommended change in the ordinance would define the, would not change anything in the felony. We still would not qualify anybody if they have a felony. However, we would change the language for a misdemeanor of moral perpetude to be a misdemeanor within the last five years that would justify unfitness for city employment. What that means would be if an employee or candidate was wanting to come in for a general office position and they have a DUI, we could consider them within the last couple of years. If they were wanting to apply for, say, a solid waste and recycling driver position, and that position's main requirements are driving, we would not qualify them for those first couple of years, because their main position does require driving. I would recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions, and.
Any questions or discussion?
I like the fact that it gives our Human Resources Department the discretion to view these things and make the determination they feel is best.
For each position, yep. Okay. All right. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 3885.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. Item B, consideration, discussion and possible approval of an emergency measure for ordinance 38, oh, move for a measure.
I make a motion that we approve the emergency ordinance.
Second.
I love when you do the work for me.
I know.
Thank you.
All right. Item C, consideration, discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3891. Trevor.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Spurgeon. The ordinance before you just basically clarifies our court cost compliance ordinance. Basically, before an individual could be arrested or jailed for failing to pay court costs and fines and costs that had previously been imposed on a separate offense, they have to be given the opportunity to request a cost hearing to determine their ability to pay. So, we created those offenses back in 2023, but in order to have our citation system with GeoSafe that we're updating, we need to modify the language of Section 1633 and adopt this ordinance to make sure that there's clarity between the difference of failure to pay, cite and release, and also for the cost arrest warrants. So, basically, it's an internal housekeeping measure for us to make sure that we can keep those two different citations separate. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 3891.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Item T is the emergency clause.
Move for the emergency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Item E, consideration, discussion of adoption of ordinance number 3892. Trevor.
This is similar to the ordinance you just considered and adopted. This is for those who've been arraigned and released on their own recognizance. It also makes sure that it's clarified that if they don't show up for their court hearings, that would be a separate offense. And so, again, this is just an internal housekeeping so that we can keep track of those two different offenses.
Good. Any discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 3892.
Second.
Item F is the emergency clause.
Make a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
Roll call. Item G, consideration, discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3893. Trevor, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, this item was previewed at the last City Council meeting. As a quick review, it basically clarifies two things. The first is that it's not legal to camp on city property without city permission, and so that just makes it explicit. The second change makes it more efficient for our police officers to enforce our trespassing ordinance. Police Chief is here, he can speak to this in more detail if you need more information. But basically, what this provides is that if somebody's in camping on private property without verifiable permission of the record owner or other person in lawful possession of the property, it's unlawful. And so, the reason behind this is we've had several circumstances where there's been folks camping on private property, and we've attempted to track down the owner of the private property. They may have been out of town, it might have been undeveloped tract of land, and so that's used a lot of police resources. So, this makes it more efficient so that the person who is on the property needs to show us permission that they have from the private property owner to be there. Again, it's just enforcing private property rights that are currently existing. Happy to answer any questions for you, and again, Police Chief Arnold is here to answer any questions you may have.
Chief, did you want to address or answer any questions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilors, Mr. Spurgeon. I'm Police Chief Lance Arnold, and Trevor did a great job of explaining this, but I would submit to you tonight that what this ordinance does is actually instill rights that already exist for property owners, and equally important for adjacent property owners that may live in a place where there's an absentee property owner, or as Trevor mentioned, a developer or an LLC that doesn't have an office in, sometimes even in Oklahoma. And what has happened in the past is that someone will set up a campsite in an area like that, and, you know, well, obviously, we'll get complaints. What we can inscribe him was that process that we currently go through now, which can sometimes adjacent property owners, there's no remediation for them. And in that same time, there tends to be, in a lot of these cases, continued unlawful accumulation, biohazard issues, and all kinds of other, you know, unsightly and unwieldy things that can become an actual public safety hazard for our residents. This is not an ordinance that is criminalizing homelessness or any of that other stuff that, you know, people may have thought. What it is instead is, again, just instilling the rights that already exist for our property owners. In fact, I would argue that rather than criminalizing homeless, it actually offers protections for people that may be in violation of this ordinance, because it offers, before we can bring any criminal charges whatsoever, it offers that we have to give them the opportunity to remove themselves from someone else's property, and we also have to provide them with the resources to do so. And so, there's no fear of arrest as long as they become compliant, once we show up and ask them to leave the property that doesn't belong to them. You have any questions?
No.
All right.
Do you guys have any questions? We do have someone sign up to speak on behalf of this item, Mark Smith.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Mark Smith. I'm the CEO at Housing Solutions. We're the lead agency for homeless services and the consortium of organizations that provide services and housing and resources to people experiencing homelessness all across Tulsa County. So, I'm here today to talk a little bit about the ordinance was helping, helpful hearing from the police chief about that this is not about criminalizing and that there would be warnings, and that's good to hear. Just a little bit about Housing Solutions. You may not have heard of us. Our organization was only founded about five years ago, so we're relatively new. We lead those 60 agencies, including local governments, veteran service agencies, healthcare organizations, outreach organizations, and housing and healthcare treatment programs. Our role is really to coordinate services, advocate for resources to provide those services, and then providing support to both organizations that serve people experiencing homelessness and those people individually, to ultimately help them get into housing, become sustainable, and to really end homelessness across all of our communities. As you all well know, homelessness has continued to increase, not just in Broken Arrow, but in every part of Oklahoma, especially all across Tulsa County. This past January, working with volunteers, we conducted what's called a point-in-time count, so we count every individual who's in a shelter, and we also do a street canvas of every street across the whole county, from Skiatook to Sepulpa to Broken Arrow, and we found 1,449 individuals who were counted, which was an increase from last year. Just to kind of highlight some of the issues that we're seeing in our communities. So, for the 23-24 school year, Broken Arrow Schools had over 700 students who were experiencing housing instability, who were doubled up, were experiencing homelessness or did not have a regular place to sleep at night. So, that's just the students. That's not including also the other members of their household. And as I understand, that has continued to increase year over year. It's really reflective of just how many households in Broken Arrow are just struggling to make ends meet. One of our partners, Broken Arrow Neighbors, has over 15 calls a day for assistance. Just over the first two weeks of August, they had calls for families that had fallen behind on rent and were looking for assistance to avoid eviction. The total amount of assistance that those households needed was over $17,000. And we also had, they also had over $5,000 in requests to help maintain utilities during that period. So, we've seen across the broader Tulsa County metro service area, just looking at costs here, this is just how far your paycheck goes. Average rent that people are paying has increased 40% in the last five and a half years, and just most households aren't making 40% more on their paycheck every, every year. So, we're seeing more family struggles. I want to acknowledge that no one wants encampments in our communities. Many people who live in these encampments, I'm sure, would rather have a better place to live, where they're out of the elements, they have a place to use the restroom, prepare food, and have the safety of a home. One of the biggest challenges that we have is, we don't have a place for people to go. So, in July, we have about 568 beds across our county for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. 594 of them were filled across July. Most shelters, like the Tulsa Day Center, Tulsa County Social Services, are actually opening up more beds in hallways and offices, so individuals and families can get in, but really bursting at the seams. So, the concern with, you know, encampments is not, we want people to have another place to go, but there's just very few places. So, what I would ask here is perhaps an alternative, trying to offer people resources that if there are identified encampments, that we could work with the City of Broken Arrow to offer resources, knowing that shelter beds are most likely not going to be available that same night. If we can coordinate with the city and with Broken Arrow Police Department to deploy outreach teams, to identify who's there, where their status is in housing assistance, and work to get people into a more permanent situation. These things don't happen overnight, but if we can address encampments by giving people a place to live, we usually don't see those encampments come back. It's a permanent resolution. It's best for our communities, and it's, of course, it's best for our most vulnerable members of our, our city and our communities.
Yeah, sounds like we would definitely would want to work with you, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Isn't that, isn't that part of the, this ordinance is, is offering the resources?
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
That is included in this ordinance, and that's great that we have organizations that we can partner with to, you know, help out when we can, what we can.
Well, and I would assume you, as a Tulsa County Sheriff Deputy, would be witnessing a lot of this in Tulsa County.
Yeah, we've seen a lot, and we've done a lot, you know, and like the gentleman was saying, sometimes those folks can't help it, and other times, that's just what people prefer, you know. Myself, some of my partners helped a gentleman that we saw on a regular basis into an apartment and found him a job, and within the next three weeks, he was back out in the same spot. He says, it's just easier to be out here under this bridge than it is to have to go to work every day. So, some folks can't help it, some folks, it's their preference, but when there are resources that are available, that's great.
Yeah, absolutely. Bless you.
But the ordinance does give the opportunity for the officer or whatever to maybe benefit him, look at resources, as just mentioned, and other resources to do that. So, that's part of the protocol. It's not arrest them, it's just trying to help them, get them, you know what I mean? Trying to protect the private property also, people's property.
And it's my understanding, I mean, this is not anything new, it's just clarifying the ordinances that are already on the books.
In place, yep. Okay. Any further discussion, questions?
Is there anybody else to speak on it?
There is not, nope. And so, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 3893.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call. Item H is the emergency clause.
Move for emergency.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I know, I heard it.
Oh, it didn't go, okay, sorry.
You clicked it twice.
All right. And so, we'll make sure that we have Housing Solutions as a contact for, yeah.
I'll speak to the chief, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to understand more what type of assistance they'd be providing.
Okay.
Any other organizations who are out there who, you know, want to be included on that list of resources, you know, we welcome those.
Yeah, absolutely.
The more options available, the better.
That's exactly right. All right, item 12 is remarks and inquiries by governing body members. Nothing?
Well, there's just so much going on here in our great city. I mean, you know, we had a ribbon groundbreaking at Haggerty Market, you know, the cranes are at the events park.
The crane is, yeah.
You know, progress is happening. We've got our GOVON public meeting coming up. So, much going on, so much to be involved in, so we encourage all of our citizens to pay attention to social media, websites, know what's going on in your community and how you can be plugged in, how you can be involved in the community, because we want input from everybody across every sector of our community, and the more input that we have, the better options we have to make, well-informed decisions.
Very good, thank you. All right, City Manager?
I have none, ma'am.
Nope, my goodness. All right. We do have an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to take a.
I'll make a motion to take a brief recess from council.
And move into BMO.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Pickle?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wimpy?
Yes. Call the Broken Arrow Minnesota Order, Authority, my goodness, Authority meeting to order. Roll call.
Pickle?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Wimpy?
Here. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Pickle?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Parks?
Here.
Wimpy?
Here. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Item five is public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions and awards. Five A is presentation regarding road closure of Main Street just north of the intersection with Fort Worth in association with the Old Town Waterline improvements.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees, General Manager, Mr. Spurgeon. I'm Timothy Robbins, Utilities Director. This evening, up to the, this evening, we'll be presenting a road closure on Main Street. If you can pull up the graphic there on the PDF for me. So this road closure is for Main Street. It is actually on for this evening. The, as you know, the, the farmer's market is out there right now in full force. Our crews, our city crews are teaming up right now, they're doing all their prep work, and will be crossing Main Street right there in front of the farmer's market pavilion. So the goal of this project, this is a continuation of our improvements to water quality within the downtown area. This is a replacement of older cast iron lines that are going across the railroad to the south. We're actually going to abandon that line, and we're installing a brand-new 12-inch line that is going to go back, we're tying in right there in front of the farmer's market and going back to the east, and it'll connect to a larger line that's going to go around Houston. So this is a really good project being done by your in-house construction forces. Can't tout on our guys enough, incredible folks. So this road closure will, will be put into effect as soon as all the farmer's market is clear. So it's not going to be on a timeline. If they're, if they're lingering a little bit, that just means we'll start a little later. So that'll be this evening, and then the work will be completed by 7:00 AM, where we'll have concrete trucks on site to fill in the holes, and we'll put traffic plates on top of those excavations and return the roadway to normal use. Then, over the next two days, we'll, working with our streets department, again, an amazing group of individuals that'll come in and help us do the asphalt. So all, everything done in-house, and will be done and out of the way by the end of the week. There will be slight road closures, just one lane closures during the week while we'll repair the asphalt, so.
So what about 1907, the business that's right there, that, where the road closure is? Is there a way to get in and out of there?
Yes, so we will have the detour signs up, but there'll be local access off to that side. Again, by the time that they're open in the morning, that road section should be opened up.
Okay.
So the, the main closure right there will be for our excavators, and then the concrete getting there at 7:00 AM.
Okay.
So with, with all, all goes well, we should be out of the roadway by 8, 9 o'clock.
Oh, perfect, okay. All right, any questions?
Thank you for opening this.
Thank you, sir. There's no action that needs to be taken. All right, item V is presentation of update of the pilot study Phase II for County Line Trunk Sewer Odor Control System. I'm excited about that.
Ah, there we go, there's some excitement. Who was excited to talk about some odors? Some sewer odors, retaining walls, it's a good night.
For the absence of odors.
Absence of odors, yes, ma'am. So the city manager asked me to come up and give you guys a, a update on our odor control efforts along our entire system, but mostly concentrating on County Line. So if you remember last year around, last July, June, July, we came to you and presented you a little bit of a background story of why we're needing to purchase a larger wager unit, an odor control unit, out on that, on County Line. So this has been a continuation of a pilot program. So that, the small unit we talked about, that was the initiation of the first phase of pilot unit. This is going to be an overview of how everything came together. So while we could just talk about just a odor unit, we want to talk about how we're actually attacking this entire scenario, because what we found is it's not just a single, it's just not a silver bullet, right? There's a whole process. So as we talk, there's a, the, the bigger zones that we're talking about is on County Line and down at the treatment plant, as well as out east where we have a lot of lift stations, right? There's a lot of odors out near lift stations where those are coming in. So just kind of an overview, you're seeing the green there is our Lynn Lane Collection Basin, and the blue is our Hakee. So this is where all of the sewer is collected throughout town. The biggest thing here is we have over 600 miles of sanitary sewer, and the distance from the farthest north point, all the way up on the top green, down all the way to our treatment plant, is 13 and a half miles. And the age of the water, time for it gets down to the top, top to bottom, is almost six days, five to six days. So you can imagine where we have some of these odors. And the odor concentrations we kind of showed on County Line in the east, it really is highlighted by this really busy graphic of all those arrows. All those arrows are lift stations pumping to another point in the system. And in the north section, north of the Muskogee Turnpike or Highway 51, they double pump, or triple pump. So a lift station to a lift station to a lift station. In one scenario, where we go down to the south side of County Line, it goes, is over three and a half miles of force main. There is over 19 lift stations that pump into the top three miles of County Line trunk sewer, and that's where you get a lot of the calls. That's where we've had that, that re, re-urgence of, of calls constantly, we've been investing into, that's where we've been attacking. So it's really a lot of the stuff that we talked about in June, so we won't get too in-depth there, but it's a lot of aging infrastructure and a lot of that, that pumping. So we talked about that lift station, that lift station magic. So you have gravity lines that can't go too far because of topography. So as you see, that lower section and that higher, higher elevation to the east, so that flow goes into the lift station, goes up that force main, and enters into that gravity sewer. So what you're seeing is those are the concentrated points of our odors. That's what we've been trying to attack, and that's where we came to multiple points. So if you think about that far, far right side, that's County Line. So, a model for success. Like I said, there was no single silver bullet. We've tried a lot of silver bullets. This has been an accumulation of a multitude of a model, where we come in with a biological approach, we add in a chemical and a physical approach in an odor control scenario, and we add mechanical combinations of improvements to our lift stations. So it's a holistic approach, not just buying a product and throwing it out online and seeing if it happens. We've, we've tried multiple different things, and this has been, we've tried, we failed, we've tried, we failed. This is a scenario that we have found success. So we've partnered with biochem to create a bacterial biological addition to the sewer collection systems. We've added odor control units in strategic locations to help and let the system breathe. And we have, through internal forces and contracted forces, we have done lift station improvements through mechanical means to alleviate a lot of the impacts from lift stations. So we allow the water coming in to match what's going out. And if you think about in your water faucet, get a lot of bubbles in there, or it keeps like a nice stream, that's what we're trying to achieve. So really, Mr. Schwab and I wanted to bring to you a lot of this content of what we're trying to do here, and the magic here is this biochem. Biochem is a bio augmentation that we are taking the bacteria that you see in your everyday life, but it's a very specific cultured scientific bacteria that we make with, teaming with biochem. They'll team it to our infrastructure, our system. It's been developed over four years in our system, and it replaced a really corrosive chemical that was far more expensive than the system that we have in today. This is done by fermenters. You saw all those lift stations that we had on the north, that's where we're concentrating these efforts at. And it creates a, a, a whole growing system within your pipes. It replaces the bad bacteria, so this is what's happened inside that pipe, where it's creating a biofilm, grease, stuff that's creating those odors that we've talked about. This product comes in, and it replaces that biofilm. It replaces that bad bacteria with the bacteria we want, and it eats grease, it eats odors, it eats that H2S. And it creates it from the top, and then invests it all the way to the bottom. So this is what that fermenter looks like, sorry. This is at our lift stations, and it's a very simple process. It's cost-effective, and it is, it's simple to operate. So there's a lot, don't worry about a lot of these numbers here, we'll show that, but what we did is, we had to test this. We had to know if this was actually working. So we turned it off last year before we went into Phase II. And what we noticed was an immediate increase in H2S. You can kind of see in these averages, the first one's 2023, the second one, 2024, over five times increases. So we've increased fats, we've increased grease at our lift stations, and we increased loadings at our wastewater treatment plant. This process is helping us save money all the way at the treatment plant, but also saving our H2S gases, the odors in the system up north. It's incredible. So it was such an impact, we turned it off in 30 days. We wanted a 90-day trial, saw such impact in 30 days, turned it off, said, "No, let's, let's turn it back on, let's stop the study, we're going." So now the next thing is how can we pass cleaner gas? Wait for the pump. So we, we, we failed at trying to keep all these gases in, so let's let the system breathe. And that's what we talked about last time. We talked about the fa, the odor control units, letting that system breathe, get that gas out and filter it out.
Just let the gas out.
So it's amazing, and you know what? That pilot study, it just worked. It worked! It was incredible. So we went, so the wager unit, this is what you approved us to go into the last time we talked. We went into Phase II where these units, they're not just a standard carbon that we throw, that we have out in those little candy cane stacks that you see out on, up in front of the high school, much better unit. This has over six times the ability to scrub the, the H2S. So what we did is, when we go to, since we talked last, we found that biggest point that we talked about where the sewers came into, and it's right there at Highway 51. Right at 51 College Street and that beautiful new bridge that just got built, just right there, you've seen them off the highway. So what this system does is it does exactly what we talked about. It lets it breathe, comes out into two separate units that we purchased, and it scrubs that, those, those gases. It allows the system to breathe to where we don't see pressures, we don't see as big of issues, and it allows, it teams with our biochem, and it actually allows the pressures to mediate in the system and let those bacteria grow and eat and breathe and live. So that's what it looks, the biggest key here is 100%, just touting all our guys this evening, 100% internal force construction. Our streets and stormwater department helped us with the, with the concrete slab, our internal forces cut and cord all the manholes and set those units, and local supplier got us hooked up with the wager units. So overall, what we have seen, so that unit has been installed in February of 20th of this year. Overall, we've seen a decrease in H2S, but that wasn't the goal with these units, is allow the system to breathe. So we've seen significant pressure decreases, and we have not had, since these went in, we have not had a single odor call from the neighborhood to the south of this unit.
Or for me.
Or from, from the mayor, that's absolutely it.
Since I've been dragged by there a lot.
The, the proof is in the calls or lack thereof, and this has been incredible. We've had a, one of our employees has actually commented to us on that, it's like, man, it used to be all the time, and we haven't even noticed in six to eight months. So bigger than that, down in Fire Station 3, you know how far that is from the highway? Our H2S levels have dropped to lower than normal conditions in anywhere else in the system. It used to be so high that it would get into the station there, and we have normal levels exceedingly low for what that system would be. It's, it's incredible there. The biological, mechanical, chemical combination has proved out success. So over the next couple of years, the next phasing of this, we are watching this for the next couple of months, still proving out our peak season use. Again, this install was around 175,000 with $15,000 a yearly cost. So you can kind of see there, the benefits there are pretty minimal to the, to the expenses. We would like to expand this. If it works, prove it out, expand it. We want to reinvest into that County Line area, bring this down to New Orleans on County Line, and then out on that, that other section, we talked about the three and a half miles, we'd like to put one there pretty, pretty quickly. That'll be over near the events, the, the new event center, or the amphitheater, pardon. So it's, it's an incredible process, we're, we're very excited. What we've seen and what we've been able to do with internal forces, biological and chemical, take out the caustic chemicals that we were using back in 2022, help our plant, help the system, and do it with a very cost-minded approach.
I like it.
There's a lot there, so just let me know if you have any questions.
Have you had any, the effects of the biochem on our plant itself? Because I know we've spent a lot of money on that. Is, what's the effect of that inside the plant?
So the best part of all this is the biochem was originated from the plant. So it actually start, yes, the, the biological process that we use on a daily basis at the plant, we, that's what we're using up, up north. This is, we bought it to help us regrow bugs, if you will, at the plant. So it actually helps. And as you saw, our loadings, when I talked about the loadings, when we turned it off for 30 days, our limits that come into the, the plant exceeded our permit. So it actually helps us maintain our permit levels, be, how well it works in the system. It just shows that it's doing that much good for the plant. We actually noticed, we turned it back on because of the plant. He called us, said, "You have got to do something, you're killing me down here." So that's, it is, it's been a huge benefit.
Good, good.
Okay.
Professor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the internal talent that we have is amazing, and I don't know if we, if we had to rely on another company, if we would get this kind of product, in-product. So let's have one thank you for working so hard.
Well, Professor Robinson, I will say, I've sat in many of college class and sat through some pretty boring topics, but your presentation, your passion, your wisdom for passing gas.
Clean gas.
It's matched by none other, so I appreciate it. The graphics, they kept my attention, kept me engaged, I appreciate you and your team.
Absolutely, we, we are backed by an incredible team. I cannot ask for better, so.
No one could pass gas like you.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, there's a 45-minute presentation of this, we can go through.
We're good, thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, all right, there is no general authority business. Remarks by governing body members? City manager?
I have none, ma'am.
Oh, my goodness. There is no executive order, I entertain a ju, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion with adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Second's not showing up.
I didn't press mine.
Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority to order, roll call.
Council Ford, we need your vote on that.
Oh, I am just sleeping today. Gotcha. Roll call.
Here.
Green?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Wimpy?
Here. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call. Item 5 is public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, recognitions, and awards, there are none. Item 6, general authority business, 6A, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of October Best Practices Trip. Mr. James Bell.
Lovely to see you all, as always. It's always a, a pleasure to come here and talk with you about community and economic, and economic development, and the future of smart, intentional, and sustainable growth in Broken Arrow. So for anybody who's paying attention at this late hour still, I'm, oh, it's early, good job. Tonight, I'm here really for a conversation about our upcoming Chamber Best Practices Trip to Middle Tennessee. That's specifically to Franklin and Murfreesboro this year. First, let me share with you and others why we visit other cities, why it's so important to us to do that, and what we're going to learn about and see in Franklin and Murfreesboro this year. Then I'd welcome the opportunity for some feedbacks and feedback and questions from you. And frankly, I'd like to hear especially what learnings and answers you would like to discover if you come on the trip this year. The purpose of Best Practices Trips, next slide? Oh, I've got the clicker. I'll do the next slide, how's that? So the purposes, the purpose of Best Practices Trips, and by the way, some other chambers may call these inner-city trips, if you've heard that term before, it's really to learn from aspirational communities. It's ones that have the elements of perhaps what we might look like in the future, or feel like in the future, or are doing some things that we're interested in doing. Our goal isn't to do R and D, you know, rip off and duplicate. Instead, it's to learn what has worked for these cities, is to avoid costly mistakes that some of them have made, and it's to identify opportunities as we build the next best version of Broken Arrow. We'll sit down with the people who plan their own wins, and the people who maintain and fund the results, so that we learn the how and, and not just the what and what they did. There's a number of reasons on the screen for why we take this trip, these trips, but one that sticks out is community and economic development, it's really the flywheel of community and economic development. That's the positive self-reinforcing cycle of actions and investments in Broken Arrow that create momentum, which of course returns, turns into further growth and investment in our community. So we'll find out on these trips firsthand how community development in fact facilitates economic development. In the past few years, we've taken the Chamber and EDC leaders, along with city and civic leaders and other business leaders, to some great places. We've learned, we've visited and learned from Northwest Arkansas, from Chattanooga, Tennessee, Greenville, South Carolina. And one that's not listed up here is Carmel, Indiana, and I think that one's been an important one to Broken Arrow, because as I understand it, I wasn't here, but as I understand it, that is in fact where the first discussions or the inspiration for the Rose District came from. That's the story I understand. And so these trips can be mistaken for civic tourism, but they result in inspiring ideas and concrete wins for Broken Arrow. So earlier this way, year, I sat down with City Manager Spurgeon, and we talked about the city's near longer-term priorities. What I wanted to learn from him was priorities. What I wanted to learn from him was what our team needed to think about as we searched for the right place to visit this year. Wanted to think about how to uncover the best community to learn from this year. There were some additional criteria, but some of the ones that we came up with were development of city hall, downtown master planning, too, and that it would be helpful to visit a suburb with cultural similarities, and one that was a suburb of a large city. So, talking with my chamber team and EDC team and others, additional topics evolved. One of those was how these cities, suburban cities, sit in the shadow of larger cities, but still figure out how to support entrepreneurs in their own way, especially when those larger cities are doing a lot for entrepreneurs, how to be additive then to a larger regional ecosystem. Two cities repeatedly came up as we started our search. Those cities had many of the characteristics that we were looking for, or had all the characteristics we were looking for, and that was Franklin and Murfreesboro, Tennessee. These cities mirror BA strengths. They're fast-growing, and they balance pro-growth with family values. Just a couple of weeks ago, my leadership team made a pre-trip to visit these cities. I missed a slide there tonight. Okay, great. We made a pre-trip, and what we discovered is this may very well turn out to be the best Best Practices Trip ever. So, let me share with you what we're going to learn in each of these inspiring cities, and how that relates to us here in BA. So, Franklin is building a new city hall by 2027. They've also done an incredible job of downtown redevelopment for years. Frankly, they're a little bit further ahead of us in terms of development, although I think the Rose District is much cooler. Franklin is focused on retail development to drawing shoppers from surrounding communities. People drive from all over Middle Tennessee to shop in Franklin, and it's because they have more than big box stores. They have gone further to include many that are a bit higher in and many of their own boutiques. And again, they've done things like they've made malls cool again. Wait till you see the factory at Franklin. That is a campus of old factory buildings that they've transformed into a place to be for food, drink, and shopping. In fact, we were there at 10:30 on a Friday morning, and it was absolutely packed. It was amazing. We're also going to visit the Williamson County Schools and Entrepreneurship and Innovation Center. That's an incredible 10,000-square-foot complex that's expanding to 25,000 square feet, so we'll see their construction that's ongoing. They serve students in teaching them how to think and solve problems like entrepreneurs, how to fight cybercrime, how to win, get opportunities to win robotics and esports competitions. And one of my favorite things as a multi-time entrepreneur that I saw, was excited about, was their multiple banners of students that won national pitch competitions. They are best-in-class. And we also got to see products sold by the real companies that these students have created. So, this is education really of the future. And then finally, in Murfreesboro, and I should mention, I lived there in the mid to late 90s. The population of Murfreesboro, to give you an idea of their growth trajectory, trajectory is, they had 50,000 people in the mid to late 90s. That had doubled in a decade. Now, they have 165,000. So, in Murfreesboro, we're going to learn how they have moved their city hall to a location a few blocks off the square, and how that has helped transform the downtown from commerce of what was just on the square to extending out several roads from the square, several blocks off the square in every direction. So, we'll actually get to see what I feel like is the near-term future of VA there, which is going to help us see in Franklin even further, longer-term direction of what Broken Arrow could look like. So, in light, of course, of what's happening at NSU, we're also going to talk about Middle Tennessee State University, and how MTSU and Murfreesboro have grown up together. So, I'm thrilled to share with you about this trip. I'd love to hear your thoughts and feedback and your questions about the trip, and also, what is it that you would love to hear about on the trip in the context of what I've shown you? And by the way, Tiffany Shepherd and Amber Miller from my team are here, so they're going to take great notes. I don't have to take any notes tonight.
It sounds like you guys have like intentionally are really looking at what we're forecasting for our city. So, I love, I mean, everything sounds great that we're going to be, I mean, because we've gone on Best Practice Trips, and I leave, I'm like, we have a great city already, you know, which I'll still feel that way when we come back.
Yes.
Because I always do. But, but it, yeah, it looks like you guys are packing in a lot of stuff, and it's good stuff. So, thank you.
I'm excited to see about city hall.
Oh, yeah.
I think city hall will be really good.
Yeah.
You bet. I think I left the dates out of there, didn't I? It's October 27th through 29th. Lock down your calendars.
James and I spent a considerable amount of time discussing, trying to envision what would be most beneficial, because last few Best Practices were focused on innovation. In one of the trips, we never even spoke to a city official, for those of you that remember. And so, he was very intentional in finding some communities that in some ways are ahead of us in terms of where we want to be. And I give him kudos and his team for finding two cities that essentially have, basically are just ahead of us in some areas slightly, in other areas, other areas a little bit ahead of us in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. And I think that they've certainly done that, and I think it should be very exciting. To me, it may be one of the best we've had since we went to Overland Park area, I think, a few years ago, when first started talking about conference center and hotel and so forth. So, I'm looking forward to this, James.
Incidentally, the other city that repeatedly came up on the list was Overland Park.
I will say that if you go to college to learn to be a teacher, one of the things they teach you is to steal everything you can steal. So, you want to visit as many teaching programs as you can and learn from that, and teachers know that they'll take it with them. And I think back at the past deals that we've gone through, and, you know, it's like a hands-on, you know, whatever, yeah, I would like that, I wouldn't like that, yeah, I would really like that. So, there's so many ideas that we've gotten from those visits that I look forward to it also.
Great.
James, do you need anything from the council?
Um.
Besides them attending?
Yeah, show up, have plenty of questions in hand. We might have a, there's one location I didn't list in Murfreesboro yet. We'll see if we get to see that one. So, there's one more cool additional thing. But, think about the things that, you think really about the questions that you have about what you'll see, about what's the most, what are the most important answers that you're seeking as you think about the future? And if y'all can shoot those our way, we'll make sure we get it into the hands of our partners there. We're working very closely with folks like the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce in Murfreesboro, and the Williamson, Inc., which is the Williamson, essentially the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation in Franklin. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, James.
All right. And remarks by governing body members?
I have none, ma'am.
All right. There is no executive session. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Let's take a break for recess and clear the room for executive session.
Councilor Parks, we need your vote. There you go.
Yep. Got it. I'll second the motion to clear the room for executive session.